Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening thanking you for all the blessings you bestow upon us as a city. We ask you to continue to bless the residents of our city. We ask you to especially bless those residents who have absolutely nothing and who are struggling every day in this economy. We ask you to continue to keep our citizens safe. As we prepare upon this tropical season, we ask that you give this city your blessing. We also ask that you give us the ability to do this job in a fair and just manner. These are all the blessings we ask in our name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mr. Burford?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Winn?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The clerk will please read the resolution for the closed meeting.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, adopt the resolution. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have you here. For your benefit, the process, the procedure which we will follow tonight for this city council meeting, there are no ceremonial matters, so we'll move directly to the public hearings, and we have a number of them on today's docket at the conclusion of the public hearings. We'll move directly to the consent agenda. There are six items there. The council has the ability and probably will vote on all these matters in one vote, unless some member of council wants to have something considered separately. That's the consent agenda, and then we'll move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda. We have a number of items there. There are 29 of them, actually. We're going to vote on all these matters in just the way they are numbered and printed on the agenda, formal agenda. At the end of the agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a non-agenda item, that's something that's not on the printed docket, you'll be given that opportunity. All you have to do is sign a slip of paper, which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began. So, thank you for being here. We'll move directly to public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on April 24, 2012, under state law, on the application of visitors of Old Dominion University for closing, vacating, and discontinuing portions of the public right-of-way. A, a 10-foot alley, 530 feet more or less west of Hampton Boulevard from the northern line of 43rd Street northwardly, 102.43 feet. B, a portion of Kenova Avenue from the southern line of 48th Street southwardly, 105 feet. And C, a portion of a .14 acre parcel along the southern line of 49th Street between Bluestone Avenue and Hampton Boulevard. By six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Okay. Mr. Pearson is here to answer any questions on behalf of this university. Thank you. If there are none, there aren't any questions, so thanks very much. The clerk will call the roll, please.
I have three ordinances. The first is an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of a 10-foot alley north of 43rd Street and west of Hampton Boulevard, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing a portion of Kenova Avenue from the southern line of 48th Street southwardly, 105 feet, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on April 24, 2012, on the application of NRHA, A, for a change of zoning from R-12 district and PPRO to C-2 district on property bound about Monticello Avenue and Church Street, East 26th Street and East 27th Street. Property fronts 624 feet more or less along the northern line of East 26th Street and 210 feet more or less along the eastern line of Monticello Avenue. And fronts 456 feet more or less along the southern line of East 27th Street, extending 270 feet more or less along the western line of Church Street, premises numbered 213 through 307, East 27th Street, 2601 through 2615, Church Street, 212 through 312, East 26th Street. And B, for the closing, vacating, and discontinuing of Armistead Avenue from the northern line of East 26th Street northwardly to the southern line of East 27th Street. Planning Commission by six-year vote recommends approval.
Good, good, Rick. Mr. Oberle is here to answer questions, if anyone has any. Okay, thank you. Call the roll.
I have two ordinances for this. The first is an ordinance closing, vacating, and discontinuing Armistead Avenue from the northern line of East 26th Street northwardly to the southern line of East 27th Street, being .289 acre of land more or less, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And the second is an ordinance to rezon properties located at 212 to 312, East 26th Street, at 2601 and 2615, Church Street, and at 213 to 307, East 27th Street, from R-12, Multiple Family District and Park Place Residential Overlay District to Corridor Commercial District. Dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing three?
Public hearing three scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on April 24, 2012, on the application of Don Ar Christian for rezoning to remove conditions on property zone conditional, C-2, on property fronting 75 feet more or less along the eastern line of Aspen Street, beginning 150 feet more or less from the southern line of South Cape Henry Avenue and extending southwardly, premises numbered 1576, Aspen Street. By six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval.
All right. There are no members of the public signed up to address the council on this matter. So you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance to rezon property located at 1576 Aspen Street in order to remove conditions on property zone conditional, C-2, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing four?
Public hearing four scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 8, 2012, to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Taffari Morgan on property located at 912 Lexington Street.
All right. There's no one here to address the council on this matter either, so you can call the roll.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Taffari Morgan of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city of Norfolk pursuant to Section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing five?
Public hearing five scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 8, 2012, to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Henryine W. Robinson on property located at 863 A. Avenue.
Call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Henryine W. Robinson of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city pursuant to Section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing six?
Public hearing six scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council, pardon me, on May 8, 2012, to hear comments on the conveyance of a gem lot to Keith Thompson on property located at 425 West Avenue. And I have an ordinance-
Mr. Thompson is here to answer questions, if we have them. All right, thanks. Go ahead.
I have an ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Keith Thompson of a certain parcel of property acquired by the city pursuant to Section 58.1-3970.1 of the Code of Virginia and approving the terms and conditions of the conveyance agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing seven?
Public hearing seven scheduled for this day pursuant to action of council on May 8, 2012, to hear comments on the condemnation of easement for construction and maintenance of a wastewater main on property located at 221 Ethel Avenue.
Just a second. Mr. Howell, Henry Howell III?
My name is Henry Howell. Many people call me Hank. My address is 1 East Plume Street. That's my office where I have an eminent domain legal practice, the Eminent Domain Litigation Group. I'm here for Joseph Lee, who is the owner whose property is being taken by this resolution. And I guess I have three minutes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm here to share with you a tale of woe of Joseph Lee and his property on Ethel Avenue. In 2006, his duplex he had owned since 1974 burned. He had permits to rebuild it, but city staff got impatient with him and designated it for demolition because they rendered the determination that it cost more than 50% of the value of the building to repair the fire damage. He appealed that decision of the city and action of the city all the way to the Supreme Court of Virginia, and that decision affirming the city's action because Mr. Lee had failed to exhaust administrative remedies was rendered in March of 2011. In 2010, before the decision came down, the city initiated a process to condemn what was left, which was a lot with a pad that had supported the duplex. A condemnation resolution was passed December 7 of 2010. The condemnation resolution was fatally flawed, rendering the condemnation illegal and unconstitutional. That condemnation is now pending in Norfolk Circuit Court. Mr. Lee came to me. We discovered the illegality and the unconstitutionality of that condemnation for this utility easement, and we have filed a motion to dismiss. It has been signed to Judge Thurman for him to resolve that. By passing this resolution, you seek to have two condemnations actions going against the same owner on the same property. A mistake was made. The right thing to do is admit a mistake was made and to write it and then move on. As I said on May 8, at the comments at the end, the city is taking the cheap and easy route of using the charter rather than the condemnation laws under 25.1 of the Code of Virginia, which 98% of all condemnations occur under that, requiring a bona fide appraisal be done before the acquisition. That has not happened. Is that three minutes? Very good.
Yeah.
So I'd ask that you not pass this. I will be challenging this condemnation together with the first one. I'm fairly certain I'm going to get the first one knocked out, so the occupation September 2nd will be illegal, and the owner will have to be dealt with. I'm just alerting council to these facts. Thanks you.
Thank you. Okay. No, I think, no, Mr. Fish.
No, this council agreed to cooperate with HRSD in the construction of some sewer lines and to condemn that property which they could not acquire, which was Mr. Lee's property.
Okay.
And so based upon that ordinance, HRSD installed this line in approximately 2006. So this is an operating line, and we're willing to, HRSD is willing to pay for it. The money will come through us. Mr. Lee would like to be paid twice, and that is what we're resisting, that he wants to be paid for an inverse condemnation. We're not quite sure. We only want to pay for it once. This ordinance promotes that, so I recommend it to you, and I'd ask you to vote on it tonight.
Okay. Thanks. You can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance finding a public necessity for the acquisition of a permanent easement for the purpose of constructing, operating, and maintaining underground wastewater or water refuse mains along the westernmost 20 feet of the private property located at 221 Ethel Avenue, authorizing the acquisition by condemnation of the easement at 221 Ethel Avenue, said property situated in the city of Norfolk, and acknowledging the expenditure of the sum of $43,500 by the Hampton Road Sanitation District to acquire such pursuant to its cost-sharing agreement with the city dated January 4, 2011. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good to see you, Mr. [inaudible]. Thanks for coming. Public hearing eight, please.
Public hearing eight scheduled for this day under state law, to hear comments on a cooperation agreement between the city of Norfolk and Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the renovation of the Monroe Building.
And Mr. Oberle is here to answer any questions. We had a briefing earlier. There's no one signed up to address the matter on that, so you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance approving in principle the cooperation of the city of Norfolk with Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the renovation of the Monroe Building, approving the NRHA's creation of such entities as may be necessary, authorizing the conveyance of the Monroe Building property to the NRHA in order to maximize the tax credits available for the renovation, and authorizing the cooperation agreement between the city and NRHA. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The consent agenda, there are six items there. Would any member of the council like to have any one of these matters considered separately? He said he was going to come. Okay, call the roll, then.
Approve and consent agenda, Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2?
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an automobile repair facility on property located at 931 and 933 Pecan Point Road. By six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval.
No one signed up to address the council on this matter, but I understand that-
There is some issue with the civic league on this one. I'd like to have it continued.
Okay.
For? When is our next?
June 12 is the next voting meeting.
Sure, but it's being requested, and we would typically grant this for the first time it's on the docket, as a continuance for a couple of weeks. So we'll take up the real meat of the issues, I mean, later. So this is, is June the-
June 12 is fine. Yeah.
All right, so we're going to continue the matter. So first time it's been on the docket, and so if you can come back on June the 12th, we're glad to hear from you then. Is that right? Okay. The motion is continued to June the 12th, please.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a tattoo parlor and tattoo school on property located at 861 Monticello Avenue. By four-zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a tattoo parlor and tattoo school on property located at 861 Monticello Avenue. By four-zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing eight, please.
Public hearing eight scheduled for this day under state law, to hear comments on a cooperation agreement between the city of Norfolk and Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the renovation of the Monroe Building.
And Mr. Oberle is here to answer any questions. We had a briefing earlier. There's no one signed up to address the matter on that, so you can call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance approving in principle the cooperation of the city of Norfolk with Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for the renovation of the Monroe Building, approving the NRHA's creation of such entities as may be necessary, authorizing the conveyance of the Monroe Building property to the NRHA in order to maximize the tax credits available for the renovation, and authorizing the cooperation agreement between the city and NRHA. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2?
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an automobile repair facility on property located at 931 and 933 Pecan Point Road. By six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R1?
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an eating and drinking establishment on property located at 905 East Mission View Avenue. By six-year vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn? No, no, it's fine. I, I, I just had that. You know, I think we lost opportunity here. And it came at a time that we were in a budget crunch. And I know the manager tried to do his due diligence to get out there, but we just lost opportunity on this one. This really, it's unfortunate. But the owners were very kind to us, and I know they contacted the city. And we did go out there, we just couldn't get out there and make everything happen in time because of the budget that was going on at the time. All right. Did you vote aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Oh, I vote no.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R4, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit off-lot parking on property located at 2910 Granby Street and 109 and 111 East 30th Street by 7-0 vote. Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Um, R5.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of an entertainment establishment on property located at 411 Granby Street, Suite 10, by 6-0 vote. Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R6, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit a retail goods establishment to operate after midnight on property located at 6301 North Military Highway. By 6-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right, Mr. Ryan Perkins is here to answer any questions, if we have any. Mr. Perkins, you here? Okay, just a second. And Ellis James has some comments as well. Ellis James, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Manager. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Ken Lake Place here in the city of Norfolk. I find it interesting, the word a moment ago that was used was proliferation. And I find myself beginning to react to that issue, especially when it comes to these constant requests for the establishment for sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption. I know, Mr. Riddick, that you have fought assiduously to try to call attention to this issue, and I appreciate that. I think we have begun to reach a point where the proliferation of gas stations is now going hand and glove with off-premises. And I am hoping that this council will begin to put up a map, as you did in the informal session, with respect to an issue close to our schools earlier today, that you'll begin to take a close look at this, because I think we have a problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, you can call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement.
A second.
Excuse me. Mr. President, this Wawa kind of came up out of the blue. I, um, I don't remember this being brought to anybody's attention. The civic leagues over there have not discussed this at all. I'm trying to figure, I know it's, it's allowed under the zoning, but I would think that we have a very active civic league, two active civic leagues right across the street from there. I'm sure there was a letter sent, but I'm just shocked that, I just spoke at one of those civic leagues and it, they were talking about doing a Military Highway, Norview Avenue corridor study and trying to figure out where they want to go with this. There was never any discussion about a Wawa going in over there.
Mr. Perkins, can you come on up?
I'm not anti-Wawa. But I want to make sure that we've reached out and talked to the community about this.
And just for the record, you're Ryan Perkins from 1700 Willow Lawn Drive in Richmond, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're here on, to answer questions on behalf of the Wawa?
Developer and Wawa.
Okay. Tommy, would you like a couple of weeks, I mean, to talk to the civic leagues and see what they?
Mr. Riddick, have you heard from anybody over on that side, or?
I haven't either.
I, I was, when I was reading the agenda, I was telling my wife, we're getting another Wawa in the city, I was excited. But when I saw where it was, I couldn't understand its proximity to the other Wawa and why this location and...
I don't know that they've reached out to anybody, because I haven't gotten anything.
Well, sir, yes, the developer did reach out with the help of the planning staff to the civic leagues, and there was no opposition at those times when they were reaching out to them.
Did they reach out by a letter? Did they reach out and go? Did they?
It was letter and phone calls and emails.
So you spoke to the civic league presidents?
The developer did, yes.
Who's the developer?
Uh, the repuy company.
Are they out of Richmond?
They're out of Richmond as well. They've done all the CVS projects in the last few years here.
Hold it up a couple of weeks. All right, we're going to continue the matter just for a couple of weeks, and you can bring the developer back, if you will, who may have some questions. But in the meantime, we're going to talk with the civic leagues that would be most directly impacted by this, all right? Are you aware of any time considerations, why two weeks wouldn't, or, June 12th is right, is the?
The next Thursday.
All right? I don't believe so. I'm sure they'd like it today, but if...
I'm sure.
So we need to speak with the civic leagues?
Yeah, and do you have a card?
Yes, I do.
Maybe you can leave, can hold on for a few minutes and give your cards to the council members, and we'll see if we can contact you. But at the same time, I mean, everybody, as Mr. Smigel said, appreciates the business, right? But we just want to make sure.
I will have to say that I am a little troubled that the developer does as we ask him to do, if in fact that's true, and then yet we say, well, now we've decided that's not enough. You know, if we've asked the developer to contact the civic leagues and he in fact has done so, and the individual civic leagues haven't said anything, then it seems inappropriate and rather unfriendly for us to say, well, now we've changed our mind, you need to do more.
I don't think it's that at all. I, I think that...
Well, what is our recommendation to developers?
Right, as proven in the past, there are civic leagues that apparently the information doesn't get to them, or if the, I mean, who's the Bromley president now? And, you know, Meadow Creek, that neighborhood is a very active civic league. I mean, these are not civic leagues that would not contact us and say, you know, they would let us know if they were in favor or against something. I mean, Barkley, would you?
Well, I think if that is in fact the case, then I would like to hear from that when we have the next meeting, and I would like you to be able to tell us that that's not the case, that what the developer is telling us is, did in fact not happen.
It may all go away by then, everybody may agree.
Well, when a Wawa, you know, a Wawa is something that you, that you hear is going to come down the pike. You know, whereas, I have, I've never walked into a meeting and found something like this on the agenda that, as substantial as a Wawa, we welcome them, they do, did a great job at Chesapeake Boulevard and Little Creek Road, but we knew it was coming. You know, this was, you know, a stealth Wawa.
All right, so we're going to continue, we're going to vote on the, the motion is to continue.
And one item to note is that during the planning commission, there was a letter of support from Park Crescent, supporting this project.
Right.
So we did have support, they did reach out to us, they obviously knew we were coming. So I just do want everybody to know that we did. Okay, well, that's a good difference. Right, and I'm looking at the document here, and maybe it's just an error, it says proponents and opponents, and the only proponent is Jason, Jason Chinis. That's, I mean, there's no, not even the Park Crescent is mentioned here as a proponent of it.
Can you speak for that, or can Frank speak for that?
Well, the argument could be made, I mean, Teresa, you make a good point, and the argument could be made that if the civic leagues didn't have a problem with it, they didn't contact us. If they had an issue with it, they would have contacted us. I mean, you make a...
I just spoke at this one civic league across the street last month, and there was not, they were talking about what we can do to bring more businesses there. This never came up. There was never a discussion, so either they don't know, or it really did fly, I'm...
Is that Meadowbrook?
Yeah, Meadowbrook. Glenn Bonney is...
Well, the only point of that is one of their members is on the planning commission, so we, and I guess they voted united, but anyway, it won't hurt to wait.
Ms. Stone did indicate that they were aware of this and they were fine with it, and she did, she did...
That's what I'm saying. I just think, us for hearsay, we either have a, we either make it clear to our businesses that are coming into town, this is what they need to do, and if they don't comply, then we have a right to continue it. But if they do comply, for us to, I mean, we're talking about, we want to be friendly to businesses, well, let's support them then, if they're doing what we ask them to do. Now, if in fact, Tommy, you have evidence that that, this was not the case, you have civic leagues that have not heard about it, Mr. Riddick says it's flown under wraps, then I'm happy with that, but I'm not prepared to support the continuance.
I, I agree with you 100%, but I rely on this document that's given to us, and when there's no mention here of any other proponents, it raises a question. When we have 7-11s that come up, every civic league comes out and talks about this Wawa...
You know why they're coming out to talk about it, because they're opponents. Proponents are less likely to come. Opponents will come.
And that's true. I mean, you have a valid point, you have a valid point, Teresa.
Well, the first thing you don't want to do is do any harm, you know, and if, continuing this matter for a couple of weeks, and if the representative or the developer doesn't know of any time sensitivities, we want to make sure we do, you know, and we typically, if a member of the council would like to continue a matter for a couple of weeks, we, you know, especially when it's the first time on the docket, we generally agree to that. So, but why don't we just see if everybody wants, let's call them for the roll, okay?
What would you do?
On the motion, the motion to continue.
Okay.
Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
No.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
No.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Mr. Nguyen?
No.
Ooh. Mr. Frame?
I lost count in there. I lost count in there. So, is it, is it four to four? Three, four.
Three, four coming to you.
Three to four coming to me.
It's hell having to make it.
Three yeses, four no's?
Mr. Mayor, I, just before you vote on that, we did continue an item for Councilwoman Williams, so that a civic league could weigh in on a...
Automobile.
But the civic league hadn't heard from them at all, and I talked to the civic league president. I did talk to them.
Okay, but I mean, you know, what's, I mean, all right, I'm going to vote yes for the continuance, it's going to fail four to four, but, you know, next time somebody wants your continuance around here, well, I mean, well, you know, I mean...
But now, wait a minute. I don't think that's correct, because I think that when you ask for a continuance and you have evidence, like Councilwoman Williams did, that there is still controversy in the neighborhood, or the developer did not do as requested, then we should support that. I'm, I'm just, you know, my point is not that I don't support continuances. My support, my question was, I just, I mean, we haven't heard from Mr. Duke. Does he have evidence that not everybody heard?
Well, the continuance...
My point is, is the continuance, now we got to vote.
I know, but Paul is making the point that he's saying, well, now, when the continuance comes. Now we give every position according to its merits.
Okay, all right, it failed, Dr. Whibley, but we generally grant each other a certain professional courtesy up here when one member of the council, on the first time a matter's up, wants a continuance to explore a matter further, and, and the applicant is, does not have a time consideration, usually you want to make sure, at least, it's been, anyway, but if, to grant those sort of considerations, but if, apparently the motion's failed, so we're going to vote on it, thank, go ahead.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Paul, can I say something?
Sure.
If I'm, I'm pretty familiar, this is an undeveloped piece of land. This puts money on the tax rolls. Wawa is a good corporate citizen, and I can tell you that, I mean, most people flock to a Wawa, whether it's for the gasoline or for the coffee, or for the food bar that's inside. They also have, if anybody's, and I'm not doing an advertisement for a Wawa.
No one is even describing that.
But...
I didn't know they had.
They kept breaking off.
There's a health foods area within the Wawa, in every one of them. And being a good corporate citizen, putting this on the tax rolls for the city is significant. It's at a great, or next to a great intersection at Norview and Military. I am, I'm, even though it did come through somewhat stealthily, I am very in favor of having this, something happen at that piece of property, other than some apartments. So, I'm in, yes.
Mr. Riddick?
I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I don't disagree with one thing the good councilman from Ward 5 stated, however, I just...
I'm Ward 1.
It just, Ward 1, sorry. You can have it. I'm just, you know, it's just a concern that when you have something like this, and you think about how many 7-11s we voted on in the last two months, and how many people have come and spoke against that, that the fact that this came up, you know, I just saw it on the agenda Friday, it's just, it was an interesting thing that popped up there that, and so why not ask for the citizens to let us know what's going on? Even if they did say yes in a meeting, I'd like to know that they voted on it at that civic league, it was not communicated at all. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
The irony is, I've never been to a Wawa. Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Well, I learned they had good coffee, so I'll be going. Aye, vote aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Yeah, I'm going to vote aye, but the fact that Sybil, we would have heard from Sybil, I believe, if there had been a problem. And she said she, she was aware of it and the neighborhood was okay, that's why, you know, I voted to let it go through, and I'm voting aye.
We spent 30 minutes on this.
Mr. Frame?
Okay, I mean, I'm voting aye. I mean, I've been to a number of Wawa, guys. They're terrific, they are absolutely terrific. My only issue was one council member to ask for a little time to make a good decision, so.
And I appreciate you considering that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We have 6A, Mr. President.
Okay.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a gas station, sales only on property located at 6301 North Military Highway, dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R6B.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption on property located at 6301 North Military Highway, dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Okay, R7.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Port Norfolk Transport Inc. based upon the correction of business license tax assessments for tax years 2009 through 2012. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Uh, but, Bernard?
Yes.
Something that you said earlier, as it relates to this, if this is a company that moved and continued to pay taxes, that's not an erroneous assessment.
Oh, this one is Port Norfolk Transit.
I know, but that just brought me to...
Yeah. That it is a, erroneous assessment is just defined as a mistake. And in this one, Port Norfolk Transport was, under the Surface Transportation Act, is exempt from business license taxes, 58.1, 3703.
Well, this one?
Yes.
But I would just, yeah.
Right, I, I take your point, but I think under the broad definition, if the assessor gets it wrong, it's subject to correction.
Okay.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Virginian Pilot Media Companies LLC based on the correction of personal property tax assessments for tax years 2008 to 2010. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R9.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Norfolk and Portsmouth Beltline Railroad Company based upon the correction of a public service corporation property tax assessment for tax year 2012. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R10.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Cementech Corporation based upon the correction of business license tax assessments for tax years 2011 and 2012. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R11.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Tyndall Corporation based upon the correction of business license tax assessments for tax years 2011 and 2012. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. What do we, R12? 12.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Advanced Technologies and Home Care Inc. based upon the correction of business license tax assessments for tax years 2011 and 2012. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R13.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Kramer Tire Company based upon the correction of a business license tax assessment for tax year 2012. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
What was the reason behind this one, Bernard?
This is Kramer Tire.
I'm sorry, Paul, for...
Kramer Tire was purchased by another entity on February 17th, 2012, and that resulted in a combination that lowered the basis for the business license tax. So it was the business combination that caused the correction of the assessment. Kramer Tire was sold on February 17th. The acquiring company, when it did its accountings and combined it, realized that combined, they were entitled to less than what they'd been paying separately. They continued to pay separately after the sale.
I think I understand.
Mr. Pishko's come prepared tonight, by the way. Every night. All right, go ahead.
Mr. Giro, yes, sir. Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nguyen?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R14.
An ordinance directing the city treasurer to issue a refund to Odyssey Healthcare Operations based upon the correction of business license tax assessments for tax years 2011 and 2012. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Paul, may I ask him?
Yes, sir.
Bernard, I think you need to explain for the citizens what the reason for this one is.
This one is similar to the one that we were discussing. This taxpayer, Odyssey Healthcare Operations, moved a portions to, a portion of its operations to Virginia Beach, but paid as if they were here for the whole time, and so that after the accountant pointed that out to them, the assessor was able to see that that was correct, and they were entitled to this proration.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-15, please.
An ordinance directing the City Treasurer to issue a refund to NB Handy Company, based upon the correction of business license tax assessments for tax years 2008 to 2012. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
May I ask?
Sure. Absolutely.
Bernard, if you could explain it to the citizens why this is being reimbursed.
Good job.
This is R-15, NB Handy Company. NB Handy Company is a wholesaler, and that wholesalers have the option of reporting their gross, their basis for their business license tax, either upon gross receipts or gross purchases. And after the end of the year, they were able to ascertain that they had a lower obligation by relying upon gross purchases. And so they made that election after the fact because it was more favorable to them.
Sounds like there's very good accountants out there.
There are some good accountants out there.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-16, please.
An ordinance to repeal four subsections of Section 25-653 and amend and reordain Sections 25-649 and 654 of the Norfolk City Code 1979, so as to add one new right turn-on-red position and ten new stop intersections.
Just a second. Mr. James? Would you like to know where every stop sign is? Was that?
I'm sure he already does.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, my name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Ken Lake Place here in the city of Norfolk. I do have a concern about one of the stop signs. I happen to travel Grimes Avenue several times a day, every, almost every day of my life. Grimes Avenue happens to be the street that the school buses pull into. Now, we have had a problem at the corner of Grimes and Meadow Lake Drive, because every once in a while, our fine citizens use that as a cut-through to go up to Military Highway the other way, when there's traffic backed up, approaching on Norview Avenue, Military Highway. They blow through the stop signs, and it's a real problem. But if you put a stop sign at the intersection of Grimes and Hartford, you are actually breaking up a five-block area that goes from Norview Avenue directly. You can look all the way up to the other stop sign that's right there at the intersection of Meadow Lake Manor and Grimes Avenue. My feeling, my gut reaction to this is that we may have a serious problem with the school buses making two stops in that five-block area, that you may run into a problem with somebody going through the stop sign and endangering the children. I'm not sure I understand at all why this is being done in the middle of that five-block area, other than possibly the possibility that traffic, the traffic division wishes to slow down the people who drive. Most of the citizens and the residents of the Bromley-Meadow Lake Manor area where I live are respectful of the 25 mile an hour speed zone. We know that there are children all over our neighborhood, many children. And most of the residents, I believe, are aware of the fact that the school buses do come and stop and offload the children, and you can imagine how dangerous that is because the kids offload and then run across the front sometimes without looking and so on. So I do have an angst. I would hope that perhaps you might consider pulling that one item out of the group and see if we can find out a little bit more about why the decision was made to address that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ellis. I hate to even ask the question if the Civic League was alerted and if they objected and since and all of that. So you don't have your traffic engineer here tonight, do you? I mean, for, I mean, who can address this? I would, rather than break it all apart, we could just continue the whole thing until the 12th, and maybe we could get some explanation. Sometimes what happens on these darn things, Ellis, is you have just one neighbor who asks, and before you know it, there's a stop sign up. Dr. Whibley? Is it okay with you if we continue the matter till?
This is going to be known as the Whibley Rule again?
Is that all right? Okay, all right. Then, so we'll move to continue the whole package until the next time we meet.
Mr. Burford?
I mean, the June 12th, whatever the meeting is.
June 12, Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
No.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
No.
Dr. Whibley?
I think I'm confused. Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
I was going to say no. No.
Aye.
Okay. Did we continue it? Really?
Yes, sir.
You guys continued stop signs, but you wouldn't continue the Wawa. Great. Love that. See what I tell you. Now we've opened up Pandora's Box here with the... All right, so where are we? Seventeen?
Seventeen, Mr. President.
Okay.
An ordinance permitting Rosemere Corporation to encroach in the right-of-way at 742 West 21st Street with an existing building, canopy, awning, and signage.
And Robin Thomas, I see, out there. Robin's here to answer questions if we have any. Okay, go ahead.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-18.
An ordinance permitting the United States of America Department of the United States Navy to encroach in the right-of-way of 6,500 Hampton Boulevard with an existing concrete wall and fence along the back of the sidewalk, an existing 20-feet section of fence attached to the bridge, and a portion of concrete bulkhead, and a proposed 20-feet section of fence to be added along the bridge. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-19.
An ordinance accepting $167,122.80 from the Virginia Department of Health Office of Emergency Medical Services for the For4Life Aid to Locality Program and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $167,122.80 from the Virginia Department of Health Office of Emergency Medical Services for the program to be used for medical training purposes and to purchase emergency medical equipment. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-20.
An ordinance approving a non-exclusive conduit construction franchise agreement with Level 3 Communications of Virginia, Inc., dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-21.
An ordinance closing certain city-owned docks to public use during the op-sale 2012 Virginia Celebration. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-22.
An ordinance establishing certain public areas and streets of the city of Norfolk as the primary festival area and the extended festival area, and setting forth the regulations applicable to each such festival area for the op-sale 2012 Virginia Celebration.
Just a second. Ellis James, Ellis, I am not voting to continue this one. I don't care what you say.
Don't anticipate, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Ken Lake Place here in the city of Norfolk. I buy my gas at Wawa, by the way, just in...
Sure you do.
The devil made me do it.
He didn't know about Wawa?
I am a little bit concerned. Four years ago, when we had a major, very important presidential election, we had a little bit of difficulty at Harbor Fest, where wording was included in the zoning and the festival boundaries that extended to the sidewalks, where many of us who were volunteering and talking to people and handing out literature, which we had a perfect right to do, as you know, in that situation. I'm concerned because I have not seen the wording of this particular recommendation and ordinance, but I would hope that that would not happen again, because it is extremely important for citizens to be able to hand out informational political material under the First Amendment, and I think that's a no-brainer. So I just wanted to call that to your attention, and since I was one-for-one tonight, I was hoping maybe you would take a look at it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-23.
An ordinance to amend and reordain the Norfolk City Code 1979 by adding a new chapter designated Chapter 34.3, pedicabs.
Mr. Is it Bargy?
Yes, sir.
Is that how you say it, Bargy?
Yes, sir.
Okay, welcome. All right. Mr. Bargy, you'd, that's okay. We don't, we don't have anybody to speak, but just the pedicab business is going to be big here, I hope, for you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R-24, please.
An ordinance appropriating funds for operation of the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013, authorizing short-term equipment financing, authorizing a supplement for retirees, increasing certain fees, providing funds for real estate tax exemption and deferral, and regulating the payment of money from the City Treasury. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford? Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I'd just like to say a couple of things if I could. You know, I really strongly believe that we should have given our employees a better raise, taking into consideration the fact that they had been filed a raise for, for four years. And they, as well as we, have seen the increase in, on all families of housing, gasoline, food, insurance, and other significant expenses. Our school district is underfunded. I mean, we, the manager did a great job, but we didn't do our part in insisting that we get more money for our school district. When I first became a member of this council, we used to use 48% of our tax dollar toward the school district. I don't know what the percentage is now, but we just can't expect great results if we don't do what we're supposed to do as far as funding is concerned. It also troubles me in terms of the increase in our utility fees. I know we have to get the money from somewhere. We are not getting it in the real estate taxes, and so the fees that are associated with stormwater and all of those issues are being increased. And usually when we do that, we increase it for more than one year. Is this just one year or a two-year increase?
For the $1, Councilman Riddick?
Oh, for the, you know, usually when they have, when we do an increase on our utility fees in a budget cycle, it's usually done for two years. And I don't know whether this is just one year or...
We have an automatic increase for water, so this is going with that tip of automatic increase. Yes, sir.
You know, and, and our manager has, you know, really did a great job, and he gave us libraries and rec centers and aquatics, you know, on the weekend. But I just really believe that we could have done better as far as our employees are concerned. And for not the first time in my history on this council, but I'm going to vote no against this budget. And it's not, you know, anything against the manager or anything like that personally. It's just that I don't believe that we did what we should have done as far as our employees are concerned. I believe we should have taken care of our employees first and build a budget, you know, after that. I vote no.
Mr. Smigle?
I wanted to echo what Councilman Riddick stated about the school system. And, you know, we have to stop looking at our schools as being a cost. This is an investment, and I'm concerned that our school board members were not vocal about the, the true impact of the budget cuts from the state. I, I think that it's been stated, but there, there isn't a sense of urgency, and we can't reach that world-class status if we're not funding our school system the way that we need to be funding them. You know, I hope, you know, both Councilwoman Whibley and I have asked for this discussion to continue through to our retreat in September and finding a, a revenue source for our schools, a general revenue source. I think it's important that we really have this discussion, because there's no other, I think, economic development that would benefit Ocean View, Broad Creek, Ward's Corner downtown than investing in our schools. And we are investing in schools. We have a new crossroad school opening, but it, sometimes it's just not enough. And we didn't put any money in our budget for new school construction for next year, but we're investing in, in other projects that, they're important, but not as important as educating our children. It's the future of our city. You know, my daughter is at Ocean View Elementary School, and there's reports every day of leaky ceilings and moldy tiles. The building is so old, who knows what kind of chemicals are coming out of those walls. I, I just have a major concern with that, but I, I can't, it, it was a good budget. I call it the budget that makes everybody happy, and so I'm, I'm not going to vote against it. But I, I think that we really have to continue this conversation about our schools. It's, it's just not enough. And the school board pointed out that this is not additional money that is being given to them. This is money that's being moved around, and I think we can do better. I think we can do more. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Well, obviously, I echo Tommy's thoughts on the education. I do actually think, I mean, it is new money, but it's not enough new money. And I actually am looking forward to our, having a new superintendent, and I'm hoping that council is going to spend some time early on in his tenure to understand what his vision is, and then we can decide as a council how it's best for us to support that financially and, and advocacy. So, you know, I, I agree with everybody. It's not enough for all the things that we want, but Mr. Jones, you did a real good job. Aye.
Ms. Williams?
I'm going to vote aye, but I just wanted to say that I appreciate the budget and the format that it was, that it was put in. Being a new member on council, a lot of times it's difficult to grasp everything and, and how it all relates together. So a lot of the explanations, you promised us a different budget book from last year, and it was a very different budget book from last year. And so I appreciate the backdrop and, and the explanations to a lot of the things that were there, and then the availability of yourself and the staff to explain things so that they were crystal clear. So, thank you for that. It, it isn't what we all wanted to do, but it is, it's still a really good budget, given what we have to work with. So, aye.
Mr. Winn?
Well, I also want to thank Marcus and his staff. We would always want to do more, but when you look at our sister cities, nobody's getting raises, taxes are going up. How he pulled this out, I, I'm astonished at how good, how good a budget it is, how little controversy we've had. And whereas our, I know our employees and all of us are in a tough economy to be able to do what we've done and keep the business moving ahead, I, I think it's nothing short of miraculous, and thank you for your work and your staff. And we can work on these other things as the year goes by. But I think, as we look at what our neighbors, we don't have to look far to find out that this is, this is pretty strong. And I know in years past, we were looking at this year, our past city manager had us this year as a catastrophic year, and somehow we have, we have worked through that, and I vote aye. Thank you.
Mr. Frame?
Yeah, I'm, actually, I think I would agree with almost everything that's been said. I want to, first of all, thank the manager for what's clearly one of the finest budgets, preparation, delivery of a budget at the very back end of, of a recession, where cities typically lag in tax collections. So as, as the economy improves, city governments usually are the worst ones out of the, out of the soup. And so that you've been able to put this together, which allows for 2% raises all the way across the board, our employees, even our retirees, as well as, you know, for the school system, not raise taxes, not cut jobs, is, is really, I think, an excellent budget and a great effort on your behalf. Just the one thing about education, and I, I agree there's not enough, you know, God knows, all four of my kids went to school, and there wasn't enough money then here, went to public schools in Norfolk. And, and I'm looking forward to this dialogue about, you know, how we can have better communication with the school system, how, you know, how we can find more funds to address some of these issues. As you know, I mean, the state cut, I guess, tens of millions of dollars from the budget. The city has never stepped back from its commitment to education. There are facts that were, that will show that, in fact, we've added money. We've either stayed the same or added money to each school year budget. And so I think we deserve some credit for the fact that we're, at least I think our heart is in the right place here. We, obviously, we need to do more. This year's budget has been, has unfolded the way most every budget that I, that we've had in years has unfolded. We got the school board budget, was delivered to all of us, their request. I think it was April the 1st. There was a request there for $6.6 million, over and above their previous budget. That was a little over a 3% increase. They were educating, you know, fewer children, about 250 fewer children. And then the manager, on April the 24th, I think, presented the budget to us, and our budget only increased about a half percent, but he found the money to, to, he came up with a strategy, is the way the budget letter to us, you know, frames it, to fund the schools' request. And that included in the letter, delivered to us on April 24th, and the rest of the community and the school board, a strategy that he would use money from, you know, improved revenue sources, which is, was the sales tax, that he would use money, that the state was late in delivering its budget, that he would use money, we thought we were going to get more money from the state, and we did, that he would put some cities' new money in, which he did. And also, he would reprogram the, he would take the bus, the money that the schools were going to use for buses and reprogram that as cash, basically, but agree to actually buy more buses from the school system than they were originally planning. So, on April the 24th, everybody knew. I think it's on page 900 of the document, I went back and looked at it, letter, that the strategy, and then that's what he did. We got to the public hearing, no one, there were 30 speakers, I think there were 10 or 11 people who spoke about, on the school system. No one complained about the strategy used to close the gap. Some people wanted more money than the school board had requested, had sought. We actually came back and addressed that. We put $900,000 more in there, in the budget, and that is, in the region, I think is unheard of for, for one city to actually overfund, fund more. So I know we need to do more. I know that there is a lot we can do better in the future, but I think we've, you know, for what we have to work with, I think we've, the manager's done a great job, and I think this is a great budget. So I vote aye as well.
Mr. President, I have to correct you on something. You said the, the...
I expected you to, no, 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 no. I said, I meant the budget from the state coming down to us lagged. It was, oh, oh, I know.
Yeah, you said the collection, but they don't, they no longer lag. We really helped the budget.
Okay. All right, well, fine. Okay. R-25.
An ordinance approving the capital improvement plan budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013, appropriating $93,583,000 for certain projects approved therein, authorizing an issue of bonds in the amount of $84,42,444, authorizing the expenditure of $4,874,866 in cash, of which $1 million is appropriated from the Public Amities Fund, and $330,000 is appropriated from the Parking Facilities Fund, MacArthur Center New Garage Reserve Fund, and the reapropriation of $4,662,990 of previously authorized but unissued bonds. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-26.
An ordinance appropriating grant funds totaling $50,352,98 to the school board of the city of Norfolk for Title I programs, other special programs, and the Child Nutrition Services Program, and authorizing the expenditure of the funds in fiscal year 2013 for Norfolk Public Schools. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Mr. Burford?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigle?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R-27.
An ordinance approving the FY 2013 annual plan for the Consolidated Plan, fiscal years 2012 through 2016, approving the applications for the Community Development Block Grant